The regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, held May 19th, 2015 at 6:00 PM at the Council Chambers Building. Deputy Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Dowling?
Here.
Councilmember Alinsky?
Here.
Councilmember Howie?
Here.
Councilmember Garrison?
Present.
Vice Mayor Viper?
Here.
Mayor Jones?
Here.
And Councilmember Pratt is absent.
Okay, thank you. We have with us tonight Roger Dagnault. Did I say that right?
Very good.
Okay, who's going to lead us in the pledge?
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. The next item is a brief summary of current events by the mayor, city council, and/or city manager. The public body does not propose, discuss, deliberate, or take legal action on any matter brought up during this summary unless a specific matter is properly noticed for legal action. Mr. Bartosz?
Madam Mayor, council members, just a couple items. If you're in the parks, anytime in the near future, you'll see that the no tobacco signs are going up and the designated tobacco areas are being designated along with the appropriate disposable or disposal device there for the tobacco products. This Friday, we'll again be hosting Operation Graduation at our rec center. In the next couple of weeks, we have a couple of longtime employees retiring. Krista Danard from the library and Roger Kamholz from wastewater. That's it, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. The next item, oh, excuse me, I guess I have, council members, do you have anything to add?
I don't.
Okay. Just to let you all know, Linda Heidenreich finished up the Water Literacy for Kindergarten program this past week, and it was excellent. She takes them to the wastewater treatment plant. She takes them for a ride on the cat bus so that they can see what public transportation is like and encourage them to think about using it in the future. She takes them to the water tanks by the guidance clinic, and she takes them to the Verde River. And this year, after Kevin Dix left to go down south to teach, we have Heather Langley, and she's the new teacher, and she was excellent. And I think there were like about forty-five or forty-six kids that participated in this. And they're really pretty adorable at that age. Pretty innocent. And so it's lots of fun. I was able to make it to one river trip with them, and then I met them at the water tank this year. I also would like to let you know that the City of Cottonwood Police and Fire Department's personnel, comprised of the Verde Valley Fallen Heroes Committee, presented a check for $10,030 to the One Hundred Club of Arizona this past week. And the One Hundred Club is a nonprofit organization that provides financial assistance to the families of police officers and firefighters who are killed or injured in the line of duty. And it provides financial assistance to public safety agencies who need help purchasing safety equipment. And it also provides for the children and spouses of public safety personnel with scholarships for college and provides other financial help to public safety agencies. So I believe that Brandon Whacker is the team leader, but there's quite a few of our police and firefighters who are on this committee. And they had a, it's their third annual Heroes Golf Tournament. And they came up with $9,454. And after the event, to bring them to an even $10,000, city manager Doug Bartosz donated 546 to make it even. So I would just like to thank you for that. That was really, really nice, I think.
They tried so hard and did such a great job. I hated to see them fall short of their goal.
Their goal was $10,000.
Certainly a worthy cause.
Absolutely. So we appreciate you that you were able to bring them up to their goal. And of course, we couldn't have done that without the businesses. And we have, I think, Melissa Sterly was their accounting person, is that correct? She's in the audience with us tonight. But we couldn't have done it without all the businesses and organizations that also contributed to it. So the Hundred Club rep's name was Amy Armenta. She was here to accept the check. Mingus Union High School, we took a tour of that. It was me and the vice mayor, and Councilmember Alinsky was working on a historical event, so he sent his beautiful wife, Ellen, in his place. And Terrence Pratt was able to be there. And I know that Randy was signed up, but he was very ill that Dan wasn't able to make it. But we had our tour given by Danielle Glick, and she's a senior this year, and she was just an amazing. You have anything to add, Vice Mayor?
No, she was, she's very knowledgeable, and she knows exactly where things are hidden and the classes to go into when you're touring the school. She was really, really good. She was impressive.
She was. And we also were accompanied by Superintendent Dr. Paul Ty and the principal, Mrs. Jennifer Chilton. So it was very impressive. We just have a really amazing, excellent school. They were just recognized again by the U.S. News and World Report as being in the top quarter, I think, in the nation. And then they also just received the A-plus certification. So a couple of things this week that they were recognized for. And this week, we also gave out the awards for the Cottonwood Conservation Film Contest at Mingus Union High School, and Jeff Wood is their instructor. And these films were really, they were excellent. There were twenty-seven students who turned in films for the conservation awards. And it was really hard to decide, so we ended up adding a couple of more awards just for honorable mention. And everyone who did a film actually makes the world better, I think, even if we couldn't pick everyone to win. And then these films will be shown at one of Juliana Birchke's open cinema events, but it was canceled on Saturday because of the weather. And so we don't know yet, but I'm sure the council and the public will be informed as soon as we know when they'll be shown to the public. And that's my report for this council meeting. Okay, the next item is introduction of new employees. And we have Commander Gary Isenda.
Madam Mayor, council members, happy to introduce our three newest employees. Will be coming to you again with all the different employees that we're hiring with our expansion from the fire agencies that are subscribing with us. So I'll start on my right here. We have Kate Ochsendall, joined the Cottonwood Police Department as a communications specialist on May 11. She began her career in public safety communications with the Sedona Fire District. So she's one of the few that applied from Sedona to come over to us. Prior to beginning her public safety communication career, she worked as a barista and a baker. Great Harvest Bakery, if you've ever heard of it. It's awesome. One of my favorites. And she worked as a credit union teller. She moved to Cottonwood six years ago, originally from Idaho Falls, Idaho. Her husband of seven years is a firefighter EMT who works for Camp Verde, Monzuma Rimrock, and the Verde Valley Angels Company. He's also a flooring installer and a full-time student. And Kate has two step zones. She enjoys anything that gets her outside, such as kayaking and hiking, and mountain biking, snowboarding. And she really enjoys Cottonwood because it's got the small-town atmosphere, yet it's close enough to some of the bigger cities. And with her experience at the Sedona Fire District, and really play a big part with her knowledge of the Verde Valley and how things run with Sedona Fire. So that is Kate, and I'll work over here. Misha is next. Misha joined the Police Department on April 27th. And before starting her career in public safety, she was a stay-at-home mom. She was born and raised in the Verde Valley, mostly Rimrock and Cottonwood. And her husband is engineer and assistant manager at La Berge. They have three sons, ages thirteen, four, and two. And they share a home with their dog, Lila. All right? Lila. And a pet hermit crab. Mr. Crab Crabs? Yes, okay. Mr. Crab Crabs. Misha enjoys the outdoor activities as well and crafts with her children. The family-friendly events that Cottonwood offers is a big draw for Misha. And she describes the art of surviving a house full of boys as her greatest talent. And then we have Alexis Alex Chevitz. Alexis joined Cottonwood Police Department Dispatching yesterday. So that's her second day. She's a Cottonwood native. She worked as a server at Brandy's Kitchen prior to beginning her career here. And Alexis and her husband Ian have two children. Sebastian is three, they were here earlier if you happen to see them. Sebastian's three, and Kinsley is almost a year old. Share a home with their dog Rogue. Alexis enjoys reading and running. Her greatest talent is being a mother to her two babies. Multitasking and her love for reading will serve her well in her new career. And all three of these are a great addition to our Public Safety Communications Center, and we're very happy to have them on our team.
You would say they're the latest batch for dispatch?
What's that?
The latest dispatch batch?
Yes, our latest dispatch batch. Ladies, anything you'd like to say to the council?
Thank you. Thanks for this opportunity. I'm excited to grow and expand with the dispatch center and see what we can do to make this the best area that we can for response times and make it a deeper community.
Great.
Yes, I just want to say thank you. This is round two for me, trying for this position. So it was really wanted, and I'm just really excited to be a part of this team of wonderful people.
Thank you. I'm just wondering if Mr. Rodriguez might use his tablet to take a photo, or his phone?
Certainly.
Either one? And if the city manager and commander and police chief would come up for a new employee photo? I actually don't think I have my fan, my phone or any cameras.
Must be feeling sort of free and liberated. Or lost and out of control.
Thank you.
Don't be offended if I try to call.
Thank you very much, and we wish you a very wonderful career. And we all think that working for the citizens of Cottonwood is a blessing and the citizens of the Verde Valley because we're kind of all connected, so. All right, thank you. Okay, so the next item is awards. And this is the representation of the Guardian of Freedom Award received by Doug Bartosz. And we'll both kind of share a little bit. I asked him to put this item on the agenda so that the council could see this. I think I already explained to the council that when this award was received, the city council was discussed in detail about our participation and being the only city in the United States that is a part of this. And we were all given a lot of accolades for our support of this program. But this is gorgeous. Only two people have received this award until Doug received it. One was Sheila Polk. She's our Yavapai County Attorney, who has been a part of this from the beginning. And she's actually the one that came and asked the council for permission for him to, for our city manager to participate as a co, I guess a co, are you a co?
Originally, I was going to be the only facilitator.
Okay. And then she ended up doing that with you?
Then decided it would be a good course to team teach.
Okay. So, and the other gentleman that received it is the police chief of?
He was the police chief of Washington DC Metro Police. And he was the one who brought up the concern when he toured the Holocaust Museum that police officers were actually involved in promoting Nazi ideology, following through on it to the point of committing genocide. And so that's what prompted the museum to create a course called Law and Society. And they've trained probably about eighty thousand officers predominantly on the East Coast. But they really didn't have a program that they could take outside of the museum. And so Arizona was the first one to develop such a course with their assistance.
And so the whole idea, once the police officer, or the judge, or the prosecutor, or the defender, or anyone in public safety takes this course, it's to remind us all that there's a slippery slope and that one day, police officers might be protecting the public, and the next day, if they go down that slippery slope, they could be creating genocide. Like, six million Jewish people were killed and about two million disabled.
Yeah, about eleven.
Eleven million altogether were killed during this time. So what our officers walk out with is the fact that they are defenders of the Constitution of the United States. They are defenders of our freedom. So I have always felt that this was a very worthy program. And so it's Guardians of Freedom Award, Doug Bartosz, in recognition of his tenacious spirit in becoming the inaugural facilitator and for his valuable contributions to the improvement and dissemination of the What You Do Matters Training Program for Law Enforcement Professionals. This was presented by the Jewish Community Foundation of Greater Prescott, Arizona, on April 17th, 2015. And do you have anything to add?
Just the course is, as I've explained to the council, it's now, we've just trained about twenty-five more facilitators, and they're offering the course all over the state now. So our hope is to get all fifteen thousand officers and a couple thousand prosecutors trained in this course. And we have set up a model working through our certifying agency for police officers and for prosecutors. They handle all the scheduling and the classrooms, and they've jumped into this, you know, completely, providing a lot of materials and those kind of things. So now we've set up a model which actually can be transferred to other states, which is, is the objective, is to get this training all around the nation. And so we've been contacted by Colorado and New Mexico with an interest of beginning to create the program there and the trainers to go around and do it. And it's just an important message from the standpoint that it does remind officers that they are the guardians of our freedom. And if they're not out protecting people's rights while they're doing their job to protect us from a safety perspective, then they're failing our democracy. And that's really their role.
Okay, so council, if you'd like to come up and re, what do we call it? Represent this? And if our wonderful esteemed photographer will?
I just want to back up.
You don't want to run me over? Thank you. And I am just so proud that the Cottonwood Council and all of our citizens could be part of making such a difference. Okay, the next item is call to the public. This portion of the agenda is set aside for the public to address the council regarding an item that is not listed on the agenda for discussion. However, the council cannot engage in discussion regarding any item that is not officially listed on the agenda for discussion and/or action. Comments are limited to a five-minute time period. And tonight, we have John Martinez. He is a counselor from the City Council of Sedona, and he's come to talk to us about the Veterans History Project tonight.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. Yes, I am here to support and also to basically make aware to the viewing public, everybody here, about the Veterans History Project. I'm sure we probably have got some vets that are on council, we probably got vets in the audience, but what I'd like to do is pass this around, it kind of gives a brief description of what we've got. And as we all know, especially you vets, is that freedom is never free. Throughout the history of our country, men and women have been called to make the great sacrifice and give their time and sometimes their lives, that we might enjoy freedom, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. With every challenge we face, we have risen to defend the nation that we love and cherish. Now, I'm going to basically recite a quote that was published in the Douglas Airview Magazine February 1942. And it says, "Well, men, it looks like Hitler, Hirohito, and company are at last in for a pack of trouble. They have the women of this country all riled up, and as anybody knows, when the gals play marbles, they play for keeps." When World War II ended, more than twelve million men and women put their uniforms aside and returned to civilian life. Their service was not widely recognized outside of their immediate families or communities, but they were proud of what they accomplished. They rarely discuss their experience, even with each other, but their legacy remains. That is why the Veterans History Project was created, to help us all remember. The Veterans History Project is a national project to collect and preserve the wartime contributions of civilians, support staff, and war industry workers, as well as the experiences of military personnel from all ranks and branches of the service. Nineteen million war veterans currently live in the United States. And unfortunately, every day, we lose approximately sixteen hundred of them. Motivated by the urgent need to collect the stories and experiences of these veterans while they still among us, the United States Congress created the Veterans History Project of the Library of Congress. In Arizona, the Sedona Public Library is the only official partner of this great project north of Prescott. It is estimated that there are twenty-nine thousand veterans living in the Verde Valley who are qualified to contribute. As of this writing, more than two hundred have volunteered to tell their story. And we look forward to the contributions of many, many more. Please, tell your story, or someone else will, and tell it wrong. The Veterans History Project is also interested in documenting the experience of veterans and civilians during the Vietnam, Grenada, Kuwait, Iraq, and the Afghan wars. It is the goal of the Veterans Project, volunteers at the Sedona Library, that no veteran be forgotten. After completion of an interview, the veteran will receive a free DVD in the format that can be played on either a DVD player or your computer. A second copy of that DVD is sent to the Library of Congress for preservation as part of our nation's history. To learn more, log onto the Library of Congress website at www.loc.gov/vets. If you are interested in an interview for yourself or to refer a local veteran, contact Jolene Pearson, Sedona Veterans History Project Chairwoman, by phone at 928-282-7999. Or Jay Pearson, it's kind of listed on that flyer, at comspeed.net. Knowing that this and future generations of America have much to learn from those who have served, the U.S. Library of Congress and the Sedona Public Library have embraced this project. This project is supported locally by the Sedona Marine Corps and the Sedona Alex Lodge and by generous donations by individuals from all over the Verde Valley. Tax-deductible donations to support the Veterans Project can be made to the Sedona Public Library. In addition, the Veterans History Project hosts a monthly series of events called Coffee with a Vet. And everyone is invited to meet and chat with your local veterans. Here's the good part, coffee and refreshments are available and are for free. The next meeting will be held next month, Friday, June 16th, at 10:00 AM in the Sedona Public Library. For additional information about Coffee with a Vet and assistance with veteran benefits, contact Ed Zikamakis at 928-202-2193. Thank you, and I know, Mayor, that you are a big supporter of this. I've spoken with Jolene, and she really embraces that your contribution that you've done. Like I said, I hope to speak to the other cities, and we really want to make this thing for the Verde Valley stand out.
And it would really be great if you have, do you have an attachment? You could email me?
I will do that.
And I could put it up on my Facebook page?
PDF it, yeah.
Yeah.
And send it to you.
Thank you so much.
I want to get all the Verde Valley, because the veterans, if it wasn't for you guys. And ladies, my mother-in-law, ninety-seven. and ladies, my mother-in-law, '97, it was Rosie the Reverend, she worked on the B-17 bomber in California. I thank you all, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else for Call to the Public tonight? So, you'll need to come up to the, to the lectern? So, is this an item that's not on the agenda? If it's on the agenda, you need to wait till the agenda item, but if it's not on the agenda, then this is the time. Okay? So we have Mr. Dagno with us tonight for Call to the Public.
My name is Roger Daniel, and for the city manager, council members, and all concerned citizens of Cottonwood and the surrounding areas. Tonight marks a new beginning for all of us, as we all must step up and realize that we need to take a hard look at the future finances and the picture and direction of Cottonwood. These are tough times and will continue to be hard times until we can create better-paying jobs, bring in a new look and a better picture of our future for Cottonwood, for its people, and a better direction in the 21st century. And most of all, we have to check out how we're going to pay for this. The way to do business is with an open door, an open mind, and just plain old honesty for everyone. The closed-door sessions must go, the attitudes must go, and finally, all people that make us tick must have a voice and a say and a vote, so that they too are part of our new vibrant community. Yes, we all do make a difference. Tonight, we must start and stop our runaway spending. Stop some of the projects that are on the books and see if it's definitely needed or not. Stop all new hiring. Stop and look at all the bonds that we're looking at to refinance. And stop all the pay increases for everyone with benefits. And let's stop and be smart and make those hard decisions. We must be able to run and operate this beautiful community on the money that is here, not what we hope to be here. The services that Cottonwood provides must also be looked at and better used. All we need to do is look at what has happened to our water and sewer bills, as they will continue to grow annually with runaway increases and continue to cost us more and more. The fix is on with another bond for all policemen and firefighters, retirements and pensions. But what happens in another 10 years? Do we have another bond to come up with to pull them out? I too salute our town's police and fire departments and all the brave men and women who take care of Cottonwood and the surrounding areas, but we must take a hard look at that and see what is the best way to pay for them. An example of honesty would have been informing WIFA, the Water Infrastructure Finance Authority of Arizona, about how Cottonwood had an inside rate and an outside rate for water customers. After that was heard, the board members were very upset about learning that from three outsiders. Yes, the rates will change, let's be honest about it, but let's all have a say and quit trying to slip one to us like our politicians in Washington. I could go on a little longer, but let's be honest with each other, hardworking with everyone's best interests in Cottonwood. We must change the so-called Emergency Act and do business out in the open, stop spending hard-earned money, and remember, Cottonwood will grow into a wonderful town, either with your help or not. New slogans will come and go, new wine businesses will come and go, but Cottonwood will always be a little cowboy town. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Anybody else want to comment for the public? Okay, moving on to the next item, approval of minutes for the special meeting of May 5th, 2015. I would entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve the minutes.
Second. Mr. Ilinski made the motion, the Vice Mayor seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Comments regarding items listed on the agenda are limited to a five-minute time period per speaker. Item number nine is Consent Agenda. The following items are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the council and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or a citizen so requests, in which case, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Item number one is Extension of the Old Town Jail Building Lease with Christina Williams, owner of Wild Rose Tea Room. And item number two is Award of Bid for the City's Vehicle Bodywork and Painting Services Contract. Are there any items that a member of the council would like to poll for discussion? Are there any items that a member of the public would want to poll for discussion? If not, I would entertain a motion. I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
The Vice Mayor made the motion to approve the consent agenda, and Councilmember Ilinski seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 10, New Business. The following items are for council discussion, consideration, and possible legal action. If it is okay with members of the council, I'd like to move up number six. We do have someone here from out of town that would be able to get home a little earlier tonight, and this is Authorization for Staff to Complete Negotiations for the Certain Loan Transaction with FSL St. Monica Incorporated for the Highland Square Senior Living Project. Is that, I guess there's no one here?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Okay. So, moving this item, yes, you are here, and I, I have sat in the same room, and we've visited before in the past, so, I'm sorry, but no one has a name on here, and I have, I don't recall if you...
Steve Hastings.
Steve Hastings, that's right. Steve Hastings.
Mr. Hastings is the Director of Real Estate for the Foundation for Senior Living.
Okay. So, let me get to that item.
Steve, I'm distantly affiliated with that, is this, is removed enough? I participated in work on the design, on the Highland Square project.
No, I think you're fine, this is unrelated to the...
Yeah, just making sure.
Okay, so, Mr. Horton, if you wanted...
Madam Mayor and Council, thank you. Yeah, Mr. Hastings is here, he came up, we, I think we've spoken before as well, and he introduced himself. This is simply asking the council to authorize us to conclude the negotiations around preparing the documents to effect the loan that the council previously authorized, which enabled the foundation to obtain the low-income tax credits that will enable them to construct the senior living apartments, the low-income, low and modest income senior living apartments that they've been trying to bring to Cottonwood here for, for a number of years. And they tried several cycles to get these tax credits, and through, with the assistance of points that they got on their application, as a result of the council's willingness to extend a loan to them, we now get to move the project forward. We do have, we're just finalizing the loan document and the security for that loan, and just to keep, to keep the project on track and to not miss, you know, not go into another meeting cycle, we're asking the council to authorize the transaction to close once we're finished with the documents, and we'll have the mayor sign it.
So, this is nothing new to the council, we've had it on our agenda quite a number of times.
And I'm sorry, I need to add that one of the things that we're asking to change is, is over the time since the council initially authorized the loan, they are asking for a little bit more money, so they can, they can meet their percentage goal of the cost of the project, from $120,000 to $131,250. And, and the loan will be repaid over five years with interest, and will be secured by a letter of credit, which is a bank instrument, and will keep the city very secure.
Okay, I know you've been working very hard on this, and there's been kind of a few hills and dales and...
Anytime you put lawyers into a transaction, it takes some time.
Yeah.
Kind of like Solange, it ruins everything.
Is there any discussion on when the project might start?
I defer to Mr. Hastings.
Mr. Hastings, do you have anything that you'd like to add to the conversation and discussion?
Nothing, but just, thank you, Mayor, Mayor and Council for persevering, for all the help. I think we'll start in June.
Wow.
And we'll let you know if we can do a groundbreaking, but at this point, we just need to get going.
Right.
So, thanks for the support, and our costs went from about 5.5 to 6.5, and the foundation and a few others kicked in to cover it, but your help is critical and preserves our 10 points in our application. Without it, we'd get rescored and...
Might lose the project.
So, thank you.
Well, I think, I think I can speak on behalf of the council that we're pretty excited about the project and want to see it go forward. It's going to be a great addition to our community and provide a service to people and be another beautiful place to live that is close, as the project was planned, to the library, the rec center, the hospital, and places where people can get to easily, hopefully not have to get in a car and drive everywhere. But, so I'm looking forward to this project. So, any discussion or questions from members of the council on this item? Any comments from members of the public? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I will move to authorize staff to complete negotiations for that certain loan transaction with the developers of the Highland Square Senior Living Project to increase the loan amount as initially authorized, from $120,000 to $131,250, to authorize the loan be made to FSL St. Monica, is that right? Inc., rather than FSL St. Monica VSLP, as initially authorized, and authorize the mayor to execute the necessary documents and for the city to release the funds once the negotiations are successfully concluded, the documents signed, and upon receipt of acceptable security to ensure the timely repayment of the loan. Thanks, Steve.
Second. Councilmember Ilinski made the motion, the Vice Mayor seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much for being here, Mr. Hastings. Okay, the next item is Resolution Number 2798. A resolution of the Mayor and Council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, approving the form and authorizing the execution and delivery of a loan agreement with the Water Infrastructure Finance Authority of Arizona from its Drinking Water Revolving Fund Program, delegating the determination of certain matters relating thereto to the manager and the finance director of the city. Providing for the transfer of certain monies and making certain covenants and agreements with respect thereto, authorizing the taking of all other actions necessary to the consummation of the transactions contemplated by such loan agreement and this resolution and declaring an emergency. Mr. Rodriguez.
Yes, Mayor and Council, we've been, we've been working several years towards this goal, and we bring some of the number when the 2006 bonds are ready to be called. We've already covered a lot of the information on this, on this particular topic. The last time we met on this, you gave us the direction to approach the, to submit an application with WIFA and meet with them, which we did. We are pleased, of course, to tell you that they approved the loan, and they also gave us $550,000 worth of forgivable interest on this. I have Grant Hamel with me, he updated the presentation he provided to you some time back, and he'll go ahead and go over it and the steps that we'll need to take to go ahead and bring this to fruition and then get our call notices out, although the bond holder on 2004, if you see bond, so, with that being said.
Mr. Hamel, anything to add?
Oh, I do. Madam Mayor, members of council, it's a pleasure to be here once again with you. Rudy provided an excellent overview and history of this effort with the Water Infrastructure Finance Authority that I originally presented to council back in July of last year, as something that we were looking forward to doing as those prior bonds issued in 2006 became eligible to be called and retired. Furthermore, I gave council an update in December about the effort to refinance this debt through WIFA, and at that time, as Rudy indicated, council gave staff the green light to go forward to apply for those funds. And on April 15th, following a meeting of the WIFA Board of Directors, that loan was approved in the amount of not to exceed $11,247,000. So, I would like to give you, before you take action on the resolution tonight, just kind of a brief update as to the benefits of that program. In your packets, I presented a PowerPoint presentation, I'll just touch upon the highlights, Madam Mayor, members of council. On page one of my presentation is just an overview of what WIFA is about. As, as most or all of you know, WIFA is our state revolving loan program, and primarily, they lend money for water and wastewater projects. One of the terrific benefits of WIFA is that they're able to lend money at a below-market interest rate. So, they have the ability, as a triple-A rated issuer, and also because of the funds in back, the money that they're able to maintain, they're able to allocate some of those funds to subsidizing loans to participating communities of their program. So, they really have an extremely attractive program for the council to consider. Now, their primary mission is to loan money for new projects, not, not to do debt refinancing, because debt refinancing in itself doesn't create the economic vitality and improvements that there, really is their mission. So what they require, as I discussed with council before, is that you accompany your refinancing request with a, a new money project need, of which the city always has out there. They weren't specific on how much that should be, so, working with Rudy and the staff of the water system, we identified the Mingus Avenue Waterline Replacement as being an eligible project in the amount of about $1.1 million to be part of our loan application. And as Rudy mentioned, one of the, one of the terrific surprises and benefits of our effort is that in granting the loan approval, what WIFA Board also did is say, we will forgive half of the amount of the cost of that new project. So, Rudy said, an interest subsidy, it's actually a principal subsidy, so, they will effectively loan 1.1 million and expect only to get paid back $550,000. So it was a tremendous benefit that we didn't even anticipate when we started.
Wonderful.
Madam Mayor, members of council, if you turn to page three, I just want to quickly go over the flow of funds, I discussed this with you before, but real quickly, when this transaction closes, which we anticipate if the council supports this resolution, is that this transaction would close in June, and then the proceeds of the loan from WIFA would go into an escrow account to retire the 2004 bonds that are currently outstanding for the amount of $10,400,000. So those bonds can be effectively retired immediately with just 30 days' notice to the investors. We will instruct the trustee to issue that notice if the council decides to go forward, so that we can set a loan closing date next month. month and then take the proceeds of the loan and use that to retire the outstanding bonds. They will also, of course, have monies available for the Mingus Street project and the city will draw on those monies as the project gets underway. So, we would expect in the near future that all of the funds will have been drawn down. And of course, at that point, the obligation of the city, as far as the debt is concerned, in effect transfers from the '04 bonds to this new WIFA loan that the advantages of which I'll share with you in just a minute. So, Madam Mayor, members of council, if you can turn to page five. This is your outstanding debt that is in place currently with the water system. The particular bonds that we're focused on are the Series 2004 bonds that you can see on the left-hand side of your page there totaling $10,400,000 principal. You'll note that those bonds have an interest rate ranging from 3 and 5 eighths percent out to 5%. So, the average rate currently being paid is about 4.82% on those bonds. Rudy mentioned the 2006 obligations. These, of course, were the obligations issued to acquire Cottonwood Water Works in concert with the town of Clarkdale. They have a participation in those bonds of, I think, about 25 to 27%. That issue, we will look to address next year because those bonds are not callable until July of 2016. So, we're learning through this process, the various steps that we have to go through, that we're hoping to replicate a year from now, working in concert with the town of Clarkdale. So, when that transaction comes about, we'll not only expect to save money, but the two financings for the system will be segregated to their portion and the city will have its portion. Is that clear to the members?
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay, Madam Mayor, members of council, turning to page six, this is probably the most important schedule in your pack. This represents our estimate of what the savings are to the city for doing this transaction. And real quickly, this table has a number of columns I want to quickly go through with you. Column one, that represents the current debt service on the 2004 obligations. Columns two, three, and four represents the estimated debt service on the WIFA loan that is required just for the refunding. This does not include the $550,000 loan, if you will, net loan for the Mingus Street project. This is just for the refinance. So, depending upon the final interest rate on the WIFA loan, which I'll speak to in just a moment, column five represents the gross savings to the city at this point in doing the transaction. And I have to point out to you where the first number under gross savings that says 455, that's a typo, that should read $495,000 of savings to the city. So, in total, what we estimate is that the city will save $1.6 million in doing this transaction over the life of the loan. If you take those savings and present value them to today, that present value amount is about $1,439,000. Now, I'll have to say, in making this estimate, we used a conservative rate of 2.6%. I checked with WIFA today before coming up, and despite the fact that interest rates are edging up higher, you've read about that, you've heard about that, they said if the loan was executed today, the actual rate would be 2.3%. So, we've got a 30 basis point cushion in there. So, the savings potentially could be higher than what we're representing on this schedule. So, total program benefits on the right-hand side, substantial debt service savings over $1.6 million, more system revenues to be retained for improvements and for maintaining coverage. WIFA offers the city a subsidized loan rate, well less than the 2006 bond rate. And again, you have $550,000 of forgivable principal for the Mingus project. So, I think from any perspective with regards to the transaction, as far as savings versus the current debt, it's a tremendous advantage to the city for doing this transaction. Now, finally, I'd like to just turn to page seven, the last page in your handout, just to go over with you real quickly the timetable of the past and future key events. Rudy mentioned the submission of the loan application. The approval was on April 15th. Mayor Jones, other members of staff, council was very helpful in meeting with WIFA staff, basically convincing staff to be amenable to this application and what the benefits would be to the community. It was a very key part of the process, I think, to have good relationships with WIFA staff. So, Madam Mayor, members of council, should the city council decide to approve this resolution to enter into a WIFA loan agreement later this month and in June, we would look to finalize the loan sizing, structure, and legal documents, and we would establish the subsidized loan rate. Also, in that timeframe, we'd send call notices out to the holders of the 2004 bonds. Then, we would look to close the loan sometime in June and have the proceeds deposited into that escrow account to pay off the prior bonds and to deposit to the project account for the Mingus Street project. So, that concludes my presentation. Would be very happy to answer questions of council.
Council, any questions?
I do.
Yes.
On the water side, we have the...excuse me, having a moment. The debt coverage ratio of 1.35 minimum.
Correct.
So, now that coverage ratio is going to increase with this refinancing?
Correct.
Can we expect it to?
That is correct. Your coverage, not your requirement, but your coverage ratio will increase because you're paying less money out on debt service. And of course, that will increase even further next year when we take out the '06 bonds using the same methodology as we're doing now. Now, until the 2006 obligations are called and retired, that 1.35 times rate stays in existence, because when those were issued, they were issued as parity debt to the 2004 obligations. So, the fact that even though we have this WIFA loan, since the '06 obligations are still outstanding, that 1.35 prevails until the '06 bonds are paid off. And then, actually, the coverage requirement comes down because WIFA has a smaller or a lower coverage requirement than do the bondholders. So, and I want to say it's down to 1.15 or 1.2, but I don't want to be held at that. I've got to check with WIFA on that.
But we're looking to expire those, retire those 2006 or refinance those 2006 next year?
Exactly. The same methodology is what we're looking at now. And that would be, again, in concert with Clarkdale. Clarkdale is very knowledgeable about this process and are very interested in what transpires with, you know, the Cottonwoods experience with WIFA.
Now, would there be anything that would prevent us from being able to refinance those if...
You know, not right now unless the policy of WIFA changes to where they decide they don't want to lend money for refinancing purposes. But, you know, I don't anticipate that happening.
I guess my question is if Clarkdale, for whatever reason, was unable to refinance, would that affect Cottonwood's ability to refinance?
That's a great question, because then only a portion of the bonds would be refinanced with the Cottonwood loan. So, I don't think Clarkdale would be precluded. But, until we get to the point of looking at their, you know, their coverages and whether they can meet WIFA requirements, we can't answer that for sure, except I would say the town has already borrowed money from WIFA on more than one occasion, the most recent one being the...
Wastewater.
The Twin Five, I think they call it the Twin Five Pipeline Project. That was funded recently through WIFA. And they have a very good relationship with WIFA staff as well. So, I don't anticipate any problems or issues with that. So, at that time, looking a year from now, all of the city's outstanding water system debt that's held by outside investors will be extinguished. And you'll have your loan basically with WIFA at a very favorable interest rate that you could not get in the open market.
Great. That's excellent news.
Yeah. And it seems like Clarkdale will probably be more, it'll be easier for them. They already have a history with WIFA of paying their bills and all of that, which I think was the issue when we got the bond originally, was that they didn't have a history with what this company or the bondholders needed at that time. But, this would be different, really, because...
They, at the time, in 2006, had a much more, I'd say, limited opportunity to access the public markets.
Right.
Because the city of Cottonwood had experience with issuing general obligation bonds and certain sales tax-related bonds. They had no...
They didn't have a history of that.
...of issuing bonds. So, we didn't know at the time if they could secure an investment credit rating, which is the reason that Mr. Horton and others and a lot of attorneys figured out a way that they, in effect, could piggyback on the city's credit rating and ability to do debt financing to be able to include their funding need for their share of the system. Actually, I think in the end, worked out pretty well for all parties. The other benefit to Cottonwood that I forgot to mention is that when the '04 bonds were issued, they had a debt service reserve fund that I think I mentioned last time of roughly $1 million. That reserve fund will no longer be required if the bonds are paid off, but WIFA has their own reserve fund requirements that part of the '06 reserve fund would be allocated to. But, that new reserve fund is just required to be funded over a five-year period of time. So, the finance department will use that reserve fund to make periodic payments into the WIFA reserve fund. So, that's another added benefit of the program as well.
So, what does this do once that happens in the future? I mean, because right now, as I understand it, we carry Clarkdale's liability as a liability on our books and they carry it as an asset. So, we'll just, that will be removed. Will that help our bond rating at all? Do you think, expect our bond rating to go back up?
You know, I don't think that, Madam Mayor, in itself will. I think it will be...well, of course, at that point, you're less worried about your bond rating because you won't have any publicly issued debt. But, it'll improve your coverages, it'll be healthier for the system financially. It puts you, I would say, in a better position in the future to access the capital markets because your debt service will be lower because of these refinancings.
So, once you don't have any publicly funded bonding, then you don't ever get your rating adjusted because it doesn't...
It's extinguished.
Okay.
It goes away when the debt is extinguished.
Okay.
So, it...and as well as the secondary disclosure requirements that the finance staff maintains because those bonds are outstanding, a lot of those requirements just fall away.
Okay. Any other questions from the council, members of council? Thank you very much. I would ask for comments from the public, but there is no public here. So, members of the public?
They're here in spirit.
They're here in spirit. So, I would entertain a motion for this item.
I move to approve Resolution Number 2798 and authorize the Administrative Services General Manager to execute and deliver the loan agreement with the Water Infrastructure Finance Authority of Arizona from its drinking water revolving fund program, delegating the determination of certain matters related thereto and declaring an emergency.
Second.
So, the vice mayor made a motion and Mr. Dowling seconded it. Is this one where you need a certain percentage of votes?
Yes, Madam Mayor. We need three quarters of the council.
Three quarters. Okay. And we have one member absent, so it would be essentially six and one-third, did you say?
Six and a fraction, yes.
Five and one-third.
I defer to the investment banker.
Five and one-third, sorry.
May I just ask, just for members of the public that aren't here, but they are in TV land, what the emergency is about in the action item?
An emergency declaration makes, and this is a resolution, so it would be immediately effective anyway, but in the case of an ordinance, it makes it immediately effective and not effective 30 days after adoption. It also makes it not susceptible to a referendum. And that's something that the capital markets require. I mean, they're sensitive to committing to lending money if there is a vulnerability to litigation.
Okay. So, the vice mayor made the motion. Mr. Dowling seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Oh, and I'm sorry again, Madam Mayor. We did this recently. We need to take the vote by ayes and noes. We need to do a voice vote.
Okay. So, I have to call each person by name. Mr. Dowling?
Aye.
Mr. Alinsky?
Aye.
Mayor is aye. Vice mayor?
Aye.
Mr. Garrison?
Aye.
And Mr. Haddig?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I feel like a bunch of pirates.
Okay. So, item number two is waiver of Section 404 H8B of the Cottonwood Zoning Ordinance to Allow Placement.
Madam Mayor?
Yeah, I think reading this would be probably very important. We'll stop right now. And Deputy Clerk, please read Resolution Number 2798 by title only.
Resolution Number 2798, a resolution of the mayor and council of the city of Cottonwood, Arizona approving the form and authorizing execution and delivery of a loan agreement with the Water Infrastructure Finance Authority of Arizona from its drinking water revolving fund program, delegating the determination of certain matters relating thereto to the manager and the finance director of the city, providing for the transfer of certain monies and making certain covenants and agreements with respect thereto, authorizing the taking of all other actions necessary to the consumption of transactions contemplated by such loan agreement and the resolution and this resolution declaring an emergency. Madam Mayor?
Thank you. Back to item two, waiver of Section 404 H8B of the Cottonwood Zoning Ordinance to Allow Placement of an 80-foot communication tower for emergency services at the city's water tank site located at 89A in Willard. Commander?
Madam Mayor, council members, this is a request for a waiver of Section 404 H8B of the zoning code. That code requires any wireless communication facility which exceeds 60 feet to be brought before the council for consideration. That height limitation may be exceeded by up to 30 feet after the city council considers findings and recommendations of the Planning and Zoning Commission. The Planning and Zoning Commission meeting was held on April 20th. The commission approved the design review request allowing the 80-foot communication tower to be installed at that referenced parcel at 89A in Willard. The matter was also brought before the city council in the work session last week, May 12th, and also advised that that 80-foot tower would be appropriate. That location's a prime location for public safety. The site has the potential to become a primary site for police and fire communications and a very vital location to leverage that radio coverage that we need for future growth. The 80-foot height would allow for vertical usable real estate for those antennas and allow for separation of multiple antennas for the different channels that we would be needing. Any questions?
We discussed this very thoroughly at a work session last week, I think. And any more questions?
I'll make a motion when everybody's ready.
Mr. Dowling, please.
I approve a waiver of Section 404 dot H dot eight dot B of the zoning code for the placement of an 80-foot monopole tower at the city-owned water tank site at Willard and 89 for co-location of public safety communications in Tana.
Second.
Mr. Dowling made the motion. The vice mayor seconded it. We have a good tag team going tonight, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to item number three, lease agreement with GovNet for a broadband and public safety communication tower site. Commander?
Madam Mayor and council members, this is basically piggybacking the previous agenda item. We have communication equipment and antennas up at that site that we just mentioned. We were contacted by GovNet... We were contacted by GovNet with a proposal for a new communication site development that we discussed at the work session last week. So what we're asking for is approval of the lease agreement with GovNet, subject to negotiation and approval of a final form by the city attorney. Steve Horton is also available for any questions you might have on this.
So I did note, and I think this would be important considering what happened when the CenturyLink cable got cut, but it says here that we could use them as a backup broadband source, which I personally think we need, but would they still be affected by that cut in the cable from CenturyLink? Would they be connected to that?
I'm not certain at this point, but that's certainly what we would look at for the future. I know that's what their goal is, to have that secondary form of communication.
They could maybe be doing it wireless. But anyway, I think that would be, I'm sure you all have discussed that many times already, and it's just something that seems like it would make sense. Okay, any other questions? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I move the city enter into a lease agreement with GovNet, subject to negotiation and approval of a final form of agreement by the city attorney.
Second. So Councilmember Dowling made the motion, the vice mayor seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much. And I'd also like to add my thanks to the city clerk's office for the previous agenda item. They really helped me out with that one.
Thank you. You're welcome. Thank you and you're welcome. Okay, so next item is award of bid for the Mickelson Parkway Inner Loop Sidewalk Project. We have Morgan Scott with us tonight.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, thank you very much. You'll remember when we came before you with the sidewalk priority list a few months ago now, the Mickelson Parkway sidewalk was the council's top priority. Excuse me, and this was getting sidewalk from Sixth Street all the way up to Mingus Avenue. And you'll remember, we ran into a little bit of issue right across from the Fire Training Center. This is the same side of the street as Cottonwood Village. And the reason is there's storm drain in the ground that's higher than that, higher than the street level, so it was going to become very, very interesting. So staff was working on a way, how do we get this done, obviously within budget? And we visited with a few of the people that said, hey, how do we get the sidewalk in? And we wanted to hear what were their biggest concerns. And the biggest concern that we heard was they wanted to be able to walk with ADA access from Cottonwood Village, Austin House, there's another home there, I don't remember the name, I apologize, but they wanted to be able to get...
The Haven?
The Haven, yes, I think so. It used to be Red Rock.
Mm-hmm.
They wanted to be able to get from that facility to the library, to the rec center with a sidewalk. So we said, okay, if we have to break this project up, why don't we get it as far as the back of Cottonwood Village? That way they can walk that far. So this project, if you don't mind if I shut off the lights or just say? Actually, you want to, yeah, thank you very much. So the areas highlighted in red is actually what's going to be constructed with this project. There's one other portion actually right up. It's off-screen, it's along the fire, the old firehouse that will also be constructed with this project. And you'll remember, that sidewalk was built, but it's crumbled, so it'll also be constructed with this project. The bids came in, Tiffany Construction was the low bidder. Their bid came in at 128,000, and this project, we actually only had 80,000 budgeted. We had 40,000 from last year after the Penal Street Cottonwood Hotel project. So after working with staff and the finance department, rather than trying to split this up again into a third project, we said, why don't we roll all the funds over into next year? We'll have 123,000 to get this done with. So if council awards us tonight, we'll be able to begin this project after July 1st of next year, I'm sorry, this year, of next fiscal year. We've already talked to the contractor. We were originally concerned he wouldn't be able to hold his prices for that long. He said that's not a problem. So the contractor is okay holding his prices until after July 1st of this year. And that's, any other questions on this project?
It's going to be very nice for the public to have that. Any other questions? This, too, has been discussed in the past in pretty much detail. Okay, if there are no questions, I would entertain a motion.
I move to award the contract for Mickelson Parkway Inner Loop Sidewalk Project to Tiffany Construction in the amount of 128,627.73.
Second.
The vice mayor made the motion, Mr. Dowling seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, the next item is acceptance of a temporary construction and sidewalk easement from OHI Asset Arizona, Austin House LLC for parcel number 40642177 for a sidewalk along Mickelson Parkway.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to leave the lights down for just a second longer so we can leave the screen up. You'll see a portion of this red area right over here. The sidewalk actually leaves city property in that area, and we're going to connect up to the parking lots of both Cottonwood Village and Austin House. So we needed the sidewalk easement from Austin House. They worked with us very well, they granted this to the city at no cost. They also gave us a construction easement that's a little bit larger, so no cost associated with this. It will just allow us to move forward with this project.
It's very kind when they participate so happily and so well. Of course, it benefits them, but sure, I'm glad that they were so willing to assist. So any questions on this item, discussion?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Dowling?
I move to accept the easements as dedicated by OHI Assets AZ, Austin House LLC to construct and maintain a public sidewalk.
Okay, Mr. Dowling made the motion, Mr. Ilinski seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Claims and adjustments?
I'll move, we pay the claims.
Second.
Mr. Ilinski made the motion to pay the claims, Mr. Dowling seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. I move to adjourn. The mayor made the motion, the vice mayor seconded it first, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We're adjourned.